All right, Mr. Mayor, we're live and ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I will call to order the Riverside City Council meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2024 at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Denning.
Here.
Ms. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Lomatch.
Here.
Mr. Maxfield.
Present.
Mayor Williams.
Here. No absent members to excuse. Mr. Manager, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda as presented?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Joseph and a second from the Deputy Mayor to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If you're able, please join us to rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a number of guests here and we're very excited to celebrate some very important milestones, not only for our city as an organization, but for the people who are out making it happen for our community, our public safety officials. So we have a number of swearing ins that are going to occur. And at this time, I would ask that Mr. Stewart and Mr. Heiser join me at the podium. All right, guys, I'm going to make this as easy as possible, so I'm going to give you a read-along because I have a read-along. That's for Andrew. And Mr. Heiser. So, if you would both please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Andrew Stewart.
Aye, Brandon Heiser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear?
You guys can say it at the same time.
Okay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of.
And ordinances of.
The City of Riverside, Ohio.
The City of Riverside, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Two copies of the.
Yes, one gets scanned, one they get to take.
All right, we got it, we got it.
How many times have we done this?
This month? All right.
It's on.
It's on.
We're good.
It didn't.
All right, if any family members, Brandon or Andrew, could come up and get a few photos, would love to have you come up at this time.
No. It wasn't picking up. I mean, I got it, but.
Oh, here's the words that he said. If you want any of my jokes, I'll give it to you.
I don't think, that mic wasn't picking up.
It's on. I had bumped it for the stream, but not for the room because we occasionally get feedback.
And at this time, is Mr. Williams or Ledford? Would you want me to up here at podium? All right, gentlemen, we'll do the same drill we did with the firefighters. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Josh Gwynn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce the provisions.
Uphold and enforce the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Riverside, Ohio.
Of the City of Riverside, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Captain.
Of Captain.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Captains. I'm glancing away. All right. And if you gentlemen like to have some pictures taken off the front, this is where you have to do it.
Can't walk in that. I don't want to film a photo mom picture.
Sure.
Well, it's not likely, it's not likely that you have to have it filmed.
Well, it's true. Yeah. It would be on the livestream, you know. I gotta stay in shape.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have the oath of office for our Battalion Chief. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Scott Wallace.
Aye, Scott Wallace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws of thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
The provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Riverside, Ohio.
Of the City of Riverside, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Battalion Chief.
Of Battalion Chief.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, the pin, the Battalion Chief.
Your hair color is so pretty.
This is not my hair color.
I know, but it's still pretty.
Let me, Chiefs, I see if you work, I'll bring it up. Hey, guys, we can sit down for a minute. Chief is going to talk for a few. Well, Chief, would you mind just talking a few, saying a few words about these promotions of these new folks we've added to our staff? This is a phenomenal evening, and I would like you to talk about that for a few minutes if you could.
Yeah, absolutely. As always, thanks for taking time out of your schedule to acknowledge the milestones of our personnel. These are all replacement positions, with the exception of the two captains, which is new to the hierarchy. Come August 1st is when they took their role over. Heiser and Stewart were from our part-time ranks. Heiser's fresh out of medic school, born and raised Riverside, still lives in Riverside. So we were very lucky that he stuck it out and we were able to pick him up. Andrew Stewart has been with Riverside for six years part-time. He was full-time with Butler Township. His wife is a teacher at Stebbins, and it took a lot of coercing, but we were able to get him over here where he belongs, full-time. Matt Ledford, Captain Ledford, Captain Gwynn. Captain Ledford's been with Riverside since 2005. He's been a lieutenant with Riverside since 2007. Captain Gwynn has been with us since 2009, and he has been a lieutenant since 2016. So a wealth of knowledge the two of those bring. If you guys remember, a year ago this week, I was being sworn in up here, so time flies. In a year, I hardly recognize the place, and it's because of the people behind me. They're running the city manager and the direction of the council, so we truly appreciate that. Last but not least, B.C. Wallace, 30-year veteran of the fire service, started in the volunteer in Montgomery County, worked at several different departments in Montgomery County, spent his last 17 years with the City of Dayton, and is instrumental in the development and succession planning of the Dayton Fire Department. So we are extremely fortunate to have someone of Scott's caliber join our team in the chief's ranks. So again, thank you all for your support. And we would like, if you don't mind, to do a group picture.
Absolutely.
Of the newly sworn in, as well as our staff that attended off-duty today.
Sounds great.
Chief, who are the young people standing by the wall over there? Don't introduce them, but just, are they?
On-duty crew.
On-duty, they're volunteers, or are they staff?
No, they're all, it's a combination of part-time and career staff, full-time. Yes.
They're all good-looking young.
Good everybody? Just a quick.
We all may be a lot more flattering. Punch in.
Did some of them get on their knees then?
Yeah, we're just, why do I have those guys, you know? And there you go.
There's a big hole in the gap there. Three, two, one, and. One, two. Great, thank you.
I think my roll is being the one.
Zach, will you be sending those to me?
Always do.
I know, but I just figured, I needed to ask.
Smallest slices.
Yeah.
And I just got my new phone for that.
Oh, did you? What one is it?
We also have another group of folks here tonight that we know very well, that are going to present some honoraries to some of our staff, and we're very proud to welcome Paula Balcom to the podium. Thank you for being here tonight, young lady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, members of the audience. My name is Paula Balcom. I'm EMS Coordinator with Premier Health and the EMS Center of Excellence. Tonight, we are here to recognize crews from Riverside Fire Department, Police Department, and Huber Dispatch Center that were instrumental in out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. I'd like to thank you all for what you do. More than 350,000 cardiac arrests occur outside the hospital each year. In 2020, any mention of sudden cardiac arrest mortality in the U.S. was 436,852. CPR, especially if administered immediately after cardiac arrest, can double or triple a person's chance of survival. According to 2021 U.S. data for adult out-of-hospital cardiac arrest only, survival to hospital discharge was 9.1% in non-traumatic cardiac arrest. Tonight, we're going to recognize two separate cardiac arrests that occurred within six weeks of each other this year. They are included in that 9.1% survival to discharge with good neurological outcome. And we are pleased also to have one of those patients here with us tonight. What we recognize first is the crew that was on the first arrest. If I can have the crew that was on the July 13th incident, that is going to be dispatcher Melissa Lewis, police officer Stafford, who's not here to join us tonight, Riverside Fire Jeffrey Brogan, Aaron Cunningham, Deshaun Davidson, Phoenix Robinson, John Booth, Lieutenant Beaver, and Battalion Chief Hart. A way that we recognize these individuals is with a challenge coin that our cardiac service line has developed to recognize these events. What we're, this is an example of the chain of survival with early recognition and a call for help at the time of the incident. Early CPR in this situation on July 13th was accomplished by the 911 dispatcher and her calm demeanor in providing instructions to the bystanders, ensuring that the CPR provided was effective. The CPR was further ensured to be effective upon the arrival of Riverside Police Officer Assistance. The next link in that chain was early defubulation. EMS crews arrived and treated the presenting heart rhythm rapidly. From there, post-resuscitative care, once they had a return of a pulse, was provided by EMS, and they continued that care until transferred to a higher level of care at Miami Valley's Level 1 Trauma Center. From there, our skilled team of doctors, nurses, along with all other support staff, cared for this patient. The patient was discharged with a good neurological outcome after an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. I have spoke with this family, and unfortunately, they were unable to join us tonight. Looking forward to an opportunity to introduce them to the crews. But at this time, we'll go ahead and recognize them with their certificate for their efforts, along with challenge coin. This is the crew that would provide that successful outcome, which we'd like to recognize and thank. Okay. Did anyone have my back? Okay, thank you. All right, as I mentioned, we are pleased to have the patient from our second cardiac arrest that occurred on August 25th with us, along with his family. If you would come up and join us, please.
Don't be shy.
All right, on Sunday, August 25th, a little over five weeks ago, a call was made to 911. By the way, up here. Once again, the chain of survival played a key role in allowing us to celebrate today. Early recognition and the call for help. His wife was able to call 911, and her along with her son provided CPR. That CPR was closely monitored by the dispatcher to ensure that it was being done properly and direct. Early defubulation was provided by EMS rapidly, providing a profusing heart rhythm. Post-resuscitation care, again, this care was placed in the skilled hands of our staff at Miami Valley Hospital, and the patient was discharged and stands among us here today. Would you like to give a say?
Should I say thank you to my wife and son for getting that started, and thank you for the crew for everything they did? You know, even though I don't remember anything, basically for anything that happened, but appreciate all your efforts and what you did.
Ma'am, did you have anything?
I just want to say, from the dispatchers to the police and to the crew, amazing professionalism and just, I don't have, I don't have enough words for how we are blessed in Riverside. Amazing crew and fire EMS, police officers, everything.
Okay, if we could have up here, I know dispatcher Tammy Chapman's not with us tonight, for the Riverside Fire Department, Kyle Blankenship, Gavin McGriff, Carl Schneider, Lieutenant Foreman, and Captain Gwynn. You're on a plank, your patient here. You'll also receive the challenge coins in addition to the certificate. And again, we want to thank you for your efforts and caring for your citizens.
And if folks don't mind, can we get one more picture, just with both crews, please? Just for the record.
We're going to have one more presentation of an infield delivery of the stork pins, but I just wanted to acknowledge one thing Paula left out, is she's our second retiree from the City of Riverside Fire Department. And the culture of EMS and the aggressiveness of our paramedics started with Paula. So we definitely appreciate that, and you laid some really good eggs along the way, so, thanks.
I will say it is an honor to stand here before my former department and recognize my peers, my brothers and sisters, and my second family. I'm actually the coordinator of North Campus. I'm covering for Miami Valley, but I always make sure this department is taken care of, and I will continue to do so. The last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to present three stork pins. The crew had a field delivery back in the spring, so if I could have Phoenix Robinson, Lieutenant Foreman, and Carl Schneider up here, please. Field deliveries do not occur very often. Obviously, bringing life into the world, most first want to have them happen in a controlled environment at home, but just don't know we're able to help bring a life into the world through their training. So we recognize that they're a stork pin.
So we recognize that they're a stork pin. Love that.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to our guests and honorees this evening. That was a wonderful set of promotions, celebrations, and acknowledgements of really excellence in the field, and it's not lost upon us how extraordinary is the job that these folks are doing every day. We will move along on our agenda, and I believe Mr. City Manager, you have a couple of presentations. If the folks with us don't really want to hear much about the Sopac update or other things we have on our agenda, they're allowed to go and celebrate elsewhere, but...
Mr. Mayor, would you want to do a five-minute reset?
Thank you all for your service.
Yeah, we'll just take a minute for folks who are going to vacate to have that opportunity, then we'll move along.
I promise we're so fine.
Thank you all for coming.
I think it's more than three. I think it's more than three.
I want to be like one bird.
It's always saying stay till the end.
I can see it. Okay, it worked. Yep, go back one. Perfect, okay.
Do you have that folder that I shared with you before? The council event folder?
No, I'm sure they were scattered in offices.
It should be in your one drawer.
It may be. You just loaded it to that?
Yeah, it's a shared folder.
All right. Well, Mayor and council members, I appreciate you, again, making some time. We have with us this evening Mr. Phil Lepala. He's the Deputy Director and General Counsel for Sopac, which you'll recall is the organization we do residential aggregation programs with. We've been running with the electricity program for a while now. Mr. Lepala's got a presentation about natural gas and an update on the electricity front, and so I'll turn it over to Phil.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I'll switch the input here so you can see what you're doing.
All good.
There you go.
It's good to be with you all again tonight. Like Josh just said, I'm going to provide you just a quick update, see if my clicker's working.
Is it going?
All good?
There it goes.
There it goes. You did warn me.
I'll just drive.
Okay, perfect.
Hang on a minute. There we go.
Okay, since I last saw you all, our membership actually went up to 38 from 37. The City of Gehanna just joined Sopac and is getting ready to activate an electric aggregation program. So that's one quick update, if we can go to the next. So just a little refresher course here. Natural gas aggregation allows a community like yourselves to replace the retail product and change the standard choice offer. In electric, you have a standard service offer. Natural gas is the standard choice offer. What you're able to do is set a new default rate for your community through the program. Uses collective buying power, so it's combining all of these accounts together to hopefully get a better bulk price. One major difference that I pointed out last time is that, big difference between electric aggregation and natural gas aggregation is you should really see natural gas aggregation as an insurance product for spikes in cold weather during the wintertime, when people are using more natural gas and when rates go up. One thing I really wanted to point out, too, is that natural gas aggregation changes the supply portion, but not the distribution rate. So any proposed centerpoint energy distribution rate increases will not impact the supply portion of the bill, but only the distribution portion. Again, we're talking about natural gas, so the standard choice offer, where it's very different than the electric side, is it changes monthly. So each month, at the start of the month, you see a new standard choice offer from your local utility. So that's why, because it changes so often, that's why you should see natural gas aggregation as an insurance policy if you do it. Can you go back just one? So right now, last time I was here, you can see it was in the, last time it was in the .3-somethings per CCF. Right now, as of October 1st, it is at .4066 per CCF, and that's only good through October 1 to 31. So just, that's kind of what we're talking about. The one thing that I've been communicating closely with Josh is that what we're seeing in the current market right now, and looking at indicative pricing, is actually in the .5, low .5 per CCF, is what the indicative is. Now, keep in mind, that's a 12-month fixed product compared to something that changes monthly. So that's pretty far distance apart, so. This is just from the Apples to Apples website, from the PUCO's website. Just shows you where the standard choice offer has been, dating all the way back to November of 2018. Again, just a refresher, who can participate is residential and small commercial accounts in these programs. People that have, number one, are not, so who's excluded is a better way to put it. PIP customers are excluded from a program. It doesn't impact them. Anyone who has gone out onto Apples to Apples website and shopped and has their own contract are not included in a program. Larger industrial consumers, which the definition is more than 5,000 CCF per year. And then anyone who chooses to opt out of a program, they can choose out at any time for no fee.
And to go back, if you have aggregated, you have the option to opt in, you're just not automatically included.
Correct. And one thing we always tell people is keep an eye at their own contract and make sure there's no early termination fees that they'd get hit with, so.
And the city will be sending out communication?
When, yes, but we'll get to that. Yep, yep. So we talked about this before, it's just what can impact them, you know, weather conditions, that's why when I say wintertime can impact pricing, storage, inventory levels, exports, economic conditions in general, so. And again, the one thing I wanted to stress is this is something Sopac offers. Obviously, we already have the electric aggregation program. There, you know, I talked about there's a little bit of a gap right now from where the current market is and indicative pricing for a 12-month price. So it's something we offer. We are by no means pushing it on you guys. It is there if it's something the community chooses to use, so.
This is the last slide before electric?
I think so, I think so.
Yes.
Yep.
So I think just to kind of sum this up, and I might go back here real quick, Phil.
Yep.
As we've been watching the market all summer long, the thought process had been watch indicative pricing, where we think the charges are going to be compared to where they are now. And if the indicative pricing, if the gap there is relatively narrow, then it would make sense to roll out the aggregation program for the community. Because, for example, I think the last indicative pricing you gave was .5 in the fives, .5 per CCF. What that would mean is if we were to move forward with an aggregation program today, we would lock our residents who came along with the aggregation program into a rate that's 10 cents higher than the present market rate, if you will. And the bet, then, would be that over the wintertime, rates are going to go higher than .5, hence the insurance policy. So if they do go higher, our residents will only pay that .5 per CCF. Did you follow me so far? The wrinkle, I think, has been based on past trends, and where these gaps are fairly substantial. That 10-cent gap is pretty broad, and given the fact that the last couple winters have been relatively mild, we have been hesitant in our conversations to bring something to you that's like, now it's time to go? Because I think our hesitation is that if we lock folks in now, and we have a mild winter, we've locked everybody into a high rate, and we're just going to see people leave or try to opt out of the aggregation program. So I think part of what we wanted to test with you all today is, does it make sense to continue kind of what we've been doing, which is watch this gap, and if it narrows to something that we think may be more palatable from a market standpoint, then move forward? Or would you rather us just push something out to get something out and let folks decide what to do? And I don't know if you've got a firm gut check on that just right now, but just to boil it all down, at this point, we would basically recommend not rolling out natural gas aggregation at this point, given where the pricing is. It just seems like a bit too much of a gap currently.
The last thing we want to do is hurt resident pricing, so.
And there's nothing that would be held against us if we just continue this holding pattern, essentially?
No, in fact, I think you have some communities who are members who have been doing the same thing we've been doing for quite a while.
Yep.
And so, no, we are not under any time pressure to roll out an aggregation program. We have the option to do it whenever the market timing is right.
And when we do choose to proceed, we would then be locking in for 12 months?
Typically, yeah. That would be standard. The one thing to point out, too, is it actually takes about two months for a program to roll out, because you have to go through a 10-day period of reviews of the opt-out letter with the Public Utilities Commission. Then there's the 21-day window where residents can, you know, get the opt-out letters and choose to opt out during that window. So really, from the time of locking a rate to the activating of a program is about two months typically. So just keep that in mind. So it'd be like a December program if you were going to start today, for example.
And I think earlier in the summer, I know we had residents, I had a couple residents email me asking for updates on natural gas, and earlier in the summer, the market was maybe slightly worse in the sense that the rates we would have had to lock in at were even higher than that 10-cent gap, which is another reason why we've held off to date, where if we had proceeded earlier in the year, we would have locked our residents into a rate that was, you know, 15-ish?
They basically both moved higher, essentially, so.
But at any rate, the bottom line being, the market hasn't really changed. There's always been this substantial gap, which is why we have felt like exercising caution in the near term and not rolling out a program is the more prudent thing to do, and we'll continue to keep an eye on market dynamics. I know we have an update on electric after this, right?
Yes, I'll keep it short.
What I'll do is I'll, I think we will continue to stay in touch on the pricing equation, and I'll be sure to fill you in at various meetings or by email if it's something where these price monthly. So if we do have something that moves quickly in the market, then I'll be in touch with all of you as far as an update goes.
And to be clear, too, we get the indicative pricing more often. I mean, I could get them daily if I needed to.
Oh, I understand.
So if we got into where we saw it closing the gap, we could communicate quicker, I thought.
Yes, and we will do that, for sure.
So on the apples to apples, I think...
Yes, sir.
I think I got in on that at 36 cents, and they locked it in for a year or 18 months.
Okay.
So why, I guess I don't understand the difference between what we're trying to do and what that does.
Sure.
And why we can't get those kinds of prices as an aggregate.
Yeah, I think, without seeing the exact numbers on what you had on apples to apples...
It was a year ago, so.
Yeah, and I mean, that is, that's the answer. As a commodity, it just moves very quickly.
Right, but my point is, it was tied in for 18 months.
Right.
So why are we stuck with this month-to-month?
Oh, no, okay. So the month-to-month portion is the standard choice offer from Centerpoint Energy.
Right.
So if it was the aggregation itself, it would be locked for 12 months.
Okay, and because, okay, so the apples to apples is sort of the same thing.
It is, it's just not on a bulk scale.
Except that they were betting on a longer term, so they were giving me terms based on that.
Could be, and just being a year ago, it would have been a very different market at that time.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So let's pivot to an update on electric.
So this is more fun. So just as a refresher on the electric aggregation program, the city joined Sopac in April of 2023. We activated an electric aggregation program that started with the August 2023 meter read date. That was for eligible Riverside residents and small businesses with 100% renewable energy at a fixed term rate of 7.265 cents per kilowatt hour, and that's for 22 months, so all the way through June 2025. Right now, your rate for the aggregation program is 7.265 cents per kilowatt hour, and that's with 100% renewable energy. The current AES Ohio Standard Service Offer is 8.58 cents per kilowatt hour. That is not renewable energy. And so currently, right now, the program is approximately 15% cheaper than the standard service offer. So that's the first part, that's snapshot in time right now, and that's a really good thing. And if you can go back one more, the only other thing I was going to mention there is that is through May 31 of 2025, so it's going to stay, they're going to match each other all the way, your rate in that current standard service offer, so it will stay at that 15%.
Yeah, we basically locked in that savings through the course of this.
Yep. So we went ahead and crunched the numbers to see what that amounts to. So throughout the first 12 months of the Riverside program has saved approximately $337 per customer, per account, over that time. And what it amounts to is an approximate 30% during that time below the standard service offer. That's because the standard service offer used to be at 10 cents when we first locked the program. So averaging it out is approximately 30% lower. So that translates to approximately $1.5 million combined in savings compared to that standard service offer. So that's very exciting, so. And it's renewable energy on top of all that, so. These are just some of those energy efficiency tips that I pointed out last time. Good for both programs. Using less energy saves you money, so. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions for our guests?
Well, thank you for the update on the savings. That's very significant, that's something that we can certainly point the community to when we think about the things that we can, steps we can take as a council to make it a little bit easier every day for our residents. So we certainly appreciate that update. All right, if there's no other questions...
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you for your time, Phil.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And we have a, pardon me, another presentation after this, Mr. Manager?
Correct. And I will get that presentation loaded. All right, so, yes, we have Ms. Alexis Larson, who is the Chief of Philanthropy with Five Rivers Metro Parks, here to present about the upcoming, provide some education about the upcoming ballot initiative that Five Rivers has on the ballot, so.
Thank you, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you all, city council members and audience for having me. I'm excited to talk to you about what we've been doing with Five Rivers Metro Parks. It's very timely, because I don't know if any of you have been to Wagner Subaru Outdoor Experience, presented by Huffy out at Eastwood Metro Park, but that starts this Saturday and Sunday. It's a very, very, very popular program for us, so I'm excited to be here to talk to you today on the eve of that happening, and I hope we see you all out there having a great time, learning more about your outdoors, the activities that are available to you in your metro parks. So we've been around for 60 years, and it really started, I'm the Chief of Philanthropy, I'm actually here on my own time tonight, speaking as someone that loves the metro parks and wants to talk about the metro parks to others. And it really did start with citizen action. People in our community knew that we needed green space and that we had to protect it at all costs if we were going to have any 60, 100 years from that time. So we have a history of advocating for that, for Parks for the People. So our mission is very simple, it's to protect the region's natural heritage and provide experiences that provide a personal connection with nature. We have 18 parks scattered all across Montgomery County, some of greens, some of other counties, but mostly in Montgomery. We have 11 conservation areas, and we have Second Street Market downtown, so we have 30 loca- We have 11 conservation areas, and we have Second Street Market downtown, so we have 30 locations. We have just shy of 16,000 acres of protected land, 90% of that is kept in its natural habitat. Montgomery County, interestingly, has some of the most rich biodiversity in the state of Ohio. And we've been able to do studies to show that, it's very exciting. 300,000-plus residents visited our parks in the last calendar year, and our parks are the most visited attraction in Montgomery County. Last year, we had over 2 million visits. And I think one really important thing about noting parks are all for all people, 98% of our residents in Montgomery County are within a 10-minute drive of one of our metro parks. So you can see here the diversity in park locations. There is obviously a really good representation in Riverside, which we're very happy about. And these are on our website, if you ever have any questions about where our locations are, the activities that you can do, it's got a lot of information there, so I encourage you to visit. So we have the three pillars, protecting nature, connecting people with nature, and providing recreational activities that you can see here. And those are really the pillars of metro parks, making sure, you know, we can show that our water quality, that our air quality is better because of our metro parks. And I mentioned 90% of our land manages natural areas. This provides for very important habitat, wildlife, and we do do a lot of invasive species management. And we do, we're constantly looking at that air, energy, and water conservation and protection for our area and our region. It's extremely important that we connect with younger people. A lot of studies and a lot of data, there's a huge body of research out there. Most kids, this makes me want to drop to the floor when I hear this, but get eight minutes of time outdoors. That includes like walking from their house to a bus. They do not get outside, they are not connecting with nature. They are not understanding the importance of our outdoor nature and world, and they're not developing that appreciation for nature, so our parks are very important for that. We saw during the COVID pandemic, our attendance spiked to double. We were over 4 million visitors, people. Parks and nature and the outdoors are critical for our mental and physical health. So it's really important, and education is really one of our important pillars, making sure we're connecting not only children, but any, you know, any person that's out there that wants to learn more, we have an activity or a program for them. And then, you know, how fun it is to live an outdoor lifestyle. It's, I think it's so cool that we live in a region that has the largest paved trail network in the United States of America, right here. And so Riverside is a big part of that, that we have these paved trails, that we have our five rivers, that we have our waterways, that we have so many places to connect and get outside and recreate. We do have annual events, our big one, I already talked about that and hope that you all decide to attend that. It's really exciting. Wagner Subaru Outdoor Experience, presented by Huffy, has only continued to grow, and this year will be no exception. I'm loving the weather, I'm very sorry for last weekend and all the festivals that were planned, but very happy for this weekend because it's going to be great weather for us. So that we have a levy on the ballot, this, in just a little bit over a month, we'll be going to the polls. And what this is about is keeping our parks safe for the future. This is going to be generational for our parks. We have $58 million backlog of repair and replacement, and you can see it at Eastwood Park. If you go to Eastwood Park, there used to be a playground there, and there is not anymore. There is a spot where the playground used to be. And that is because our metro parks can currently not afford to replace that playground. As the Chief of Philanthropy, I am working on fundraising for that playground, but there are lots of amenities throughout our 18 parks, 11 conservation areas, and Second Street Market, like that playground, that need to be addressed. And so what this will do is address those things and make sure that we have generationally, for generations to come, these things fixed, improve and protect our natural areas, our wildlife habitats, ensure that we're keeping our water quality, making sure that our picnic areas, restrooms, play areas, programs, roads, bridges, all the infrastructure that I don't, I didn't think of before I started working for the metro parks. I didn't think about water lines or sewer lines in a park. You know, those are all infrastructure that we have at all those 30 locations, making sure that we can continue to provide the outdoor education, recreation, and festivals that we currently do, and making sure that we're attaining knowledgeable staff. What this will cost, it's a one mil 10-year levy that will be on the ballot. It would be $3 per month, per $100,000. It will actually be under $3 per month, per $100,000 of appraised property value. And if Montgomery County residents do look at their taxes, their current taxes are, 2% of that is our parks. So, and when we actually look at what our parks spend per acre, it's at the bottom 20th percentile. So we've continued to do a lot with, with not as much when you look at national statistics, but we definitely are going to need to be able to address this $58 million backlog of repair and replacement. Without this, we will risk not being able to keep our trails, facilities up to date, safe, clean, accessible, repaired. And we will also probably not be able to continue to do the public engagement programs, festivals. And we will risk a lot by not passing this levy. So it's really critically important for our parks. And then, I know you all know this, so I don't need to go through this, but, you know, Election Day is coming up. We do hope that we have the City of Riverside support. And Alexis Larson, as a citizen during her time off here at the meeting tonight, would ask that you all consider endorsing this levy from the City of Riverside and that we can add you to our list of endorsements. It is critically important, and we can see it already out at Eastwood, and we're going to see a lot more of that if we don't get this passed. So it's really, really important. So I really thank you all for your time and for everything you do for our region. I'm your next-door neighbor, so I love Riverside, so I'm glad to be here and thank you for having me.
Do we have any questions for Alexis here on our own time, just a passionate advocate for parks and trails? That's right. Well, I mentioned, yeah, we've, a few of us have had the benefit of seeing the presentation recently. And one of the things that, when I think of the metro parks in our city specifically, now granted, we are, we're very near Eastwood, which happens to be in the Dayton city limits, and we're very near things like the Woodman Fen, which are nearby but not inside our limits. But the bike trails that we take advantage of here in Riverside are, in my mind, phenomenal. All three of my sons are in Boy Scouts, and we spend a lot of time on those trails. We also spend a lot of time at Eastwood, and it's great for us to have those things right around the corner, and we can go from where their Boy Scout troop meets to Eastwood on a bike safely throughout. So can you talk a little bit about the significance of having the amount of paved trails that we have in our region, mostly through metro parks, and the connectivity that has with the rest of the state? And how, again, I've only lived here my whole life, so I just assume that every region of the country has things like that, but that's, something's very special.
It's really significant. We had, we've had guests come from out of Atlanta, corporate corporations that are here in town will say, you know, we've got a new CEO, or we've got somebody visiting, could you tour them? And they're blown away, so a recent tour that we took on bike with some new folks to Dayton from Atlanta, they could not believe what we have here in Dayton. They were blown away, the fact that we have so many of these parks that are connected, the fact that you can literally bike from Cincinnati, you know, all the way up the state. But really, we're this incredible hub right here in Dayton, and it really is significant because we, when I say it's the nation's largest paved trail network, there's nowhere else in the country that has this. And it really does add to, I mean, I know we've got a lot of data just on Wright-Patt alone on how much use those trails get with the folks working out at Wright-Patt. So it's really, really significant to our quality of life, to our ability to attract businesses, to keeping people healthy.
Yeah, the economic driver part is something that many folks might not think of, that, you know, who wants to pay more taxes? Nobody, really, but when you think about the investment that could be on things that they'll see down the road that we can build on, those investments have been made previously, and continue to enhance an asset that is really one of one nationally.
Yes, yeah.
All right, any other questions? I always like to ask my bike path question because I'm right by the...
I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Lomatch?
Yes, I have seen this several times, too, you do a great job. I'm not a biker, but I would make a motion that the City Riverside Council would endorse the levy.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Lomatch and a second from Mr. Joseph for the City Riverside Council to endorse, and Alexis, forgive me, what issue number do you happen to know?
35.
35, that we will endorse, issue 35, to support the metro parks, the Five Rivers Metro Parks of our region. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries, you are endorsed, well, Five Rivers is endorsed.
Thank you.
You're just a random person that's going to lead...
Citizen Larson, thank you.
Citizen Larson will go about Citizen Larson's business.
That's right.
Which is none of our business, she's a citizen.
Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it, thank you.
What time does that start Saturday?
Um, gosh, wait, I want to see it.
Noon?
I think it's noon.
Yeah.
I'll make sure you get that information. Thank you.
I'll look it up right now.
Citizen Larson's a cool name.
Citizen Payne.
All right, well, thank you for a number of exciting presentations. That's a solid hour of good stuff. We will move along to approving our minutes from our September 12 work session and council business meeting.
No to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve our meeting minutes from September 12 work session and council business meeting. We have a motion, I already mentioned that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. We are accepting citizen petitions, I know a few folks have already turned in forms to speak on either agenda or non-agenda items. So if you, if you choose to voice an opinion this evening, there are forms in the back of this room where you can turn into the clerk up at the dais. We will move along to our agenda item number 12, Mr. Manager. This is a notice of liquor license for an address on Linden Avenue, 4216?
That's correct, and I'm actually going to give this one to Mr. Miller for some context and explanation.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a unique situation. So we received, as the normal course, a notification from the Division of Liquor Control of a application for a new liquor permit. However, what struck us as odd was that the address associated with the liquor permit did not appear to be an actual addressed structure within the city's GIS mapping, within the city's plating, within the city's addressing of its streets. So our code enforcement team went to the address to sort of determine, is this an address? What is the state actually seeing that's here? And the parcel, there's no standalone structure on it. It appears to be sort of a, I don't want to say an addition, but it's part of a building at an adjacent address on another parcel that's a plaza with two or three commercial spaces within that building. And it appears, when code enforcement interviewed some of the folks working in those occupied zoned commercial businesses, that there was just some activity behind a partition. It appeared that there was some pre-construction happening, some cleaning out of a space. There's really no better way to describe it. So the city had informed the state from the division, hey, the city doesn't recognize this in its documents as any kind of an actual address. The Department of Liquor Control seems to believe that it's legitimate and is moving forward. So my legal recommendation to this council is to make a motion to direct the clerk to submit the form to request a hearing on the application here within the locality. We have the option to either have a hearing, request a hearing in Columbus or in the locality where the establishment associated with the application is made. Because of this discrepancy with the address and our records not being a real address, my legal recommendation is we should request a hearing within the locality to get to the bottom of what the state's coming from and cue that up with what our records indicate. And we do have an active code enforcement case against this partition of this property. We issued a stop work order, and we're taking steps internally. But it's a unique scenario, so I would recommend that council move to direct the clerk to request a hearing within the locality of Riverside. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Do you need someone to like say the words or just take back what he said?
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Lomatch.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Lomatch and a second from Ms. Frye. All those in favor of sending this letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda moving along is the public comment for agenda items. And I know we've had some slips turned in.
Neither or four.
Nothing for agenda items, all right. Then we will move along to our unfinished business, of which we have one ordinance, ordinance 24-0-854. And, Mr. Manager, could you give us a brief rundown of the item before us?
This is the second reading of the quarterly supplemental, there are no changes or adjustments since the last reading.
No to approve.
So we have a motion from Mr. Denning and a second from the deputy mayor. The Riverside City Council allows for the reading of an ordinance to be done by title only unless a council member requests. Otherwise, Madam Clerk, could you please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance 240854, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Riverside, State of Ohio, for the period January 1 through December 31, 2024.
I will now open the public hearing at 7:09 PM for ordinance 24-0-854. Anyone who wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Hearing no one and seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:09 PM. Is there any further discussion among members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Denning?
Yes.
Mr. Maxfield?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Lomatch? Mayor Williams?
Yes, motion carries. Moving along to new business, we have an ordinance and two resolutions. The first ordinance is some, without speaking for the manager, some cleanup in Chapter 711 of our city code.
Correct, this is the first reading of the no-knock ordinance, which was discussed at the prior work session.
Excellent.
Motion to move forward. Second.
We have a motion from the deputy mayor and a second from Mr. Joseph. The City Riverside allows for the reading of an ordinance to be done by title only unless requested otherwise by a council member. Madam Clerk, please read this ordinance this time by ordinance, by title only.
Ordinance number 240855, an ordinance to repeal or replace Chapter 711 of the codified ordinances of the City of Riverside, Ohio.
Thank you, at this time, we will ask if there's any discussion among members of council, which I should have asked a minute ago.
So I just had one point of clarification. So the ordinance reads that the sticker on the door needs to be, needs to say no solicitation or canvassing. Is that something that it's going to be required to be an official sticker? Can they make their own sticker? And relative to that, if they already have a no solicitation sticker, is that going to be honored? Just clarification on that point.
Yeah, there's, and I'll lay in and then invite the law director to correct me. The, my understanding is that as written, there's no requirement to obtain a city sticker. As long as the sticker says no soliciting and makes the appropriate citation to the code, it counts. We will, and have already, I'll give the clerk a lot of credit, we have already designed window clings, I believe, or stickers that folks can put up that we will distribute for free, so folks don't have to write their own. But there's no requirement that you have to come to City Hall as long as you post a sign that says no solicitation per the code citation.
I don't want to be like overly picky, I guess, but I get Brenda's point.
Yeah.
Because the, and I haven't, I apologize that I didn't read this far into it because of previous conversation. I mean, it says upon which clearly displays, displayed a notice that reads no soliciting or canvassing allowed per RCO 711.04. For my personal interpretation and my fear of a general interpretation of this would be that like those words are what specifically needs to be on my sticker.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I know this is like a presented exhibit, so I know there's like, we could do like a motion to strike and like revise. It's a little bit of like technical workings here, though I might need a little bit of help from if we want to, like, end this meeting, try to clean that language up a little bit. try to clean that language up a little bit.
I guess it's the nature of my question. It was just that I can see that being a point of contention in reading of the ordinance.
So, if I may.
Yep, please.
So to address council member Joseph and council member Frye's questions, the, that's true, the proposed draft language in the text amendment is in quotations as a guide as to what is specifically recognized as an example for residents in what the city would be providing on its window clings that would be provided free of charge. I apologize, I don't have the proposed text amendment in front of me, but there is supplemental language that says something to the effect of, or these words in quotation marks, or similar language that clearly indicates no solicitors allowed.
Fantastic.
I'd be happy to, without reference to the specific code section, but it encompasses the idea. So if there is a desire to sort of do some wordsmithing and make some motions to strike or add certain language when it comes up for further discussion, I'm happy to help guide from a legal standpoint counsel on that to make sure that it reflects the collective intent. So that savings language is there, so it could be a matter of adjusting what's in quotes, striking some language. There are ways to address those issues that you both raised.
I think the way you explained it, I didn't see that when I read it, but I think that addresses my concern.
I can actually show you here real quick. If you're with me, real fast. I just found it. All right, bear with me here. Okay, so this was the exhibit that was listed in the packet, and I will try to make it a wee bit bigger here, but I believe, Mr. Miller, the section you're referencing, or that we've been discussing is, this is the initial citation where it says the sign has to say no soliciting or canvassing per RCO, but in the next section, we say that we also have the savings clause here, or that otherwise clearly prohibits to prohibit peddlers, contact canvassers, vendors, et cetera. So that is the language that says, as long as your sign basically says, don't solicit, then it counts.
Right. And if you notice, yeah, it already actually says it in our current.
Oh, well, right. It's just not in red.
Yes, because that's currently, that's currently in our code.
And I think council member Frye, that savings clause, and council member Joseph, and Mr. Mayor and council, that would then allow, for example, if a resident already has some kind of signage, we don't want to require them to replace that just to affect the intent of the language change. Hopefully that answers your question.
It did, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion from members of council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxfield?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Denning?
Yes.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Lomatch?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. And just to clarify, if I didn't make it clear at the beginning, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and there will be a second reading, public hearing, and potential adoption at our next council, our next business meeting. Moving along to our two resolutions. The first resolution, two-four-r-two-nine-eight-one. Mr. City Manager, is a then and now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miller again for a brief resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm getting a workout today, so I appreciate that.
Have you moved the podium at all? That looks like a pretty good workout.
That's true. I'll save that for next time. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a typical then and now resolution. This has to do with the recently adopted contract for prosecutorial services. Because of the timing of when that was adopted in mid-August versus when the city actually received the first invoice for those services, the prosecutor line item budget has, of course, been in the operating budget for this year from the beginning. And so the state law requires, if we get an invoice prior to the time the appropriation is adopted by a resolution adopting that contract, we have to request a then and now certificate that indicates, yes, at the time that the invoice was received, there were funds in the appropriate line item budget to cover that obligation, and yes, now, at this point in time, those same funds are still there and available. So it's a housekeeping matter to allow us to pay a invoice that's hanging in that timeframe between the invoice date and the adoption of the contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Denning and a second from Ms. Lomatch to approve resolution two-four-r-two-nine-eight-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And the next, the final resolution for the evening, Mr. Manager?
The final resolution is a donation request from the Riverside Chamber for the Hometown Holiday Event. This is a request that council has given on a routine basis over the last many years. The request form is in your packet, so they did complete the donation request form and provide it to council.
So move.
And second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Lomatch and a second from Mr. Joseph. Is any, any further discussion?
And to clarify, it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah, I was just about to say.
I just wanted the clarification.
Not more than what we normally would donate, which is, this is around the same amount.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That moves us on to public comment for non-agenda items, of which I believe we have some slips. The first slip is from Mr. Tom Bush from forty-seven, I'm sorry, four-seventy-two Merwin Place. Mr. Bush, we'd love for you to come to the podium to tell us what's on your mind, and we thank you for joining us this evening in person. If you're, if you.
I'm fine.
You're good, okay.
All right. So if you could please just state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you again, and ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes.
My name's Tom Bush. I live at four-seven-two Merwin Place, the back of a cul-de-sac street. My issue is dealing with the CCA taxation division that we've accepted as a city to use. In 2022, I got a call from them after I got a letter, and then I called them, and they called me back. They didn't need any information, saying that because we were already on the, don't pay taxes because of our disabilities, and we have no income other than military retirement and our social security. Then, with, not even seven days ago, I get a letter that says I was supposed to respond in ten days from the date, which was in September, stating that we had failed to file it. Well, if they knew in '22 that we were already on the waiver list, why are they requesting it? And I speak not just for myself, but several of my residents in the Loop and the little cul-de-sac, because we've all had the same question. Several of us received the letter, and I volunteered to be the spokesperson and come forward. If they have the data, why do we need to resubmit paperwork? I mean, it made no sense. They admitted they already had the data from our previous group of who has it, and we've had no status change, other than the fact that mine and my wife's health has gone down a little more. So is there a, I did try and come over and talk with the tax person that we used to have, and I found out that they were no longer with us. So is there anybody who can look into that for us?
Well, certainly, Mr. Bush, and I believe, Mr. Manager, we also, in addition to looking into your particular inquiry, which we're happy to do, we have representatives from CCA attending a council meeting next month to address some of the issues we've been hearing from our fellow residents.
Correct.
So if it's okay with you, I would love to have the city manager follow up with you directly on your inquiry. And anybody who is watching tonight or reads the minutes of this meeting later, know that the city council plans to bring CCA in for a work session or a regular meeting. I think it's a work session.
I believe they're scheduled for the work session.
And I would also encourage anybody who has concerns to email one of us, one of the seven council members, email the city manager. Let us know specifically what your concern is, and I'm glad to hear yours tonight, because as someone who's a service veteran, you shouldn't have to go through this. And we certainly want these answers also. But we can't go off of what a Facebook post might say, or what somebody might say that another person is going through. We need to hear from that individual, and it can be an email. But we certainly would love to hear that from our community, so we know exactly what it is that we need CCA to do a better job of, or a better explanation for.
So I will, Mr. Mayor, briefly just jump in. It is, they are currently scheduled for the November seventh meeting. That is the first business meeting of the month. And just to tack on to those comments, I'm certainly happy to help forward. We'll actually give them a copy of this meeting, too, so that they can watch your comments. But for folks who are out there that may be watching, income taxes are one of those things that, because the information is very, very sensitive, it's difficult for us to pass, like, a phone call along. Getting as much of this in writing as possible emailed to the city manager box or to our finance team is helpful, because we can take that entire email chain and forward it straight to CCA and to the contacts we have over there to help look into things as well. So please feel free, anybody that's watching, to write, and we will certainly forward these things along.
If they don't email, can they write a letter, and we can scan it to them as well?
Yes, or if people want, if they want to call, or they want to stop by and visit, that's fine. We may just take some notes that we can capture to send to CCA on their behalf, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the email is citymanager@riversideoh.gov?
That's correct.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Bush.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, we'll invite Mr. John Ziegler of forty-two-thirty-eight Blue Rock Road to come and, and speak.
Hello.
Hello, sir. If you could just, I know you've been through this, but if you could just state your name and address for the record, and thank you for joining us in person, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's John Ziegler. My address is forty-two-thirty-eight Blue Lock, Blue Rock Road. I came up here last meeting to talk to you guys. I know the mayor wasn't here, so I don't know if you guys got to read the minutes, what I spoke about last time. And I was worried about the representation. And I had been on the council review meeting, and I was trying to get some of my ideas out there for the citizens to vote on, and I couldn't get any of it to go through. And I, the city had some things they wanted the citizens to know about and vote on, and all those got through, but, you know.
Not all of it.
And, not all of it, okay.
Not all of it.
Some of it, okay, yeah. Yeah, so, and then we didn't even have the charter review, so I'm a little confused about that. But I think we need to have one still. But I feel like that nothing's gonna overcome of it. I'm just wasting my time. So I feel like the only thing left for me to do is for me and my neighbors to look into being annexed by Kettering. They told me the first step was to inform you guys, so that's what I'm doing today.
Do you have anything in writing to present to us for that, for that, for that act to begin?
They, they didn't give me anything, but they told me how to tell you guys, so I'm just dealing with they, you know, the way they do it. And we're on the south end of Riverside, and we do border with Kettering, so, you know, we're really close already.
Geographically.
Yeah, well, we actually touch Kettering over there on the east end.
Yeah, the far southeast corner is correct.
Yeah.
On Spalding.
Oh, yeah.
And I, you're correct, Mr. Ziegler, I wasn't able to be at the last council meeting, and I was able to read the minutes and also watch the video. And I just wanted to, you're in precinct, precinct O?
Yes, yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
The, we've been a city for twenty-four years, I'm sorry, thirty, twenty-nine years.
Yeah.
The mayor for eleven of those years was of precinct O, correct?
Flutie, I mean, Floutie.
Yes.
He, he's one of my neighbors.
Mm-hmm. And he was a council member for eight years previous to that.
Yes.
So.
But no longer.
But no longer. I just want to point out, there's seventeen precincts in the city, and if the mayor was from, if the mayor for almost a third of the time, more than a third of the time he'd been a city, is from one of those seventeen precincts.
Yes.
I don't know that I would call that underrepresentation.
No, no. And I always liked, I appreciated having him do all that good work for our neighborhood. But Kettering has, you know, districts, Huber Heights has districts, and, you know, some of our residents go to the Beaver Creek Schools over there.
Mm-hmm.
Some of our residents go to Huber Heights Schools, so, I mean.
Some of them go to Fairborn.
Yeah, exactly.
Some of them go to Dayton.
Yeah, yeah. I know about Dayton.
There is a, through the Ohio Revise Code, there is a proceeding you could do via petition to put something onto a ballot measure, I would say.
I tried, I thought.
I mean, there is, there is, there's ways to do it. This council did not decide to take that issue up and pass it on the charter review. So that was a decision of the seven of us made. But any resident that has legislation that they want to pass, or something that you really feel strongly about, it happens all the time at the state level.
Like the chickens, too, and.
I mean, by all means, whatever you, you feel passionate about, that's, that's the part about.
Bring a friend to vote.
Being an American citizen, you have that right to put things on the ballot and to get it voted on. I would just advise you to do the Ohio Revise Code.
You guys have seen my history stuff, too, and saving my green space stuff I've been putting out there. And I'm the, I'm the, an author of the history book, that I'm sure, you know, you've heard that. I'm kind of retired from all that now. I'm getting old.
Yeah, and I would just, I would echo council member Joseph's comments that there's, there's more than one avenue to bring something to a vote. And I, I don't know that, and obviously, this is your time to speak, and I don't want to, I don't want to make it anything close to combative, but I just don't know that I can agree or just kind of let sit the idea that there's underrepresented parts of our city, when, in just the time that I've been mayor, we've made it easier to get on ballots. We have been, at nearly every meeting, we ask people to get involved on a volunteer basis on very significant decision-making bodies in our city, whether it's BZA, whether it's planning, whether it's parks and rec, whether it's our safety commission. And all we're asking is for more people to get involved. I don't think that we're trying to stifle representation. We're not trying to stifle discussion. We're not trying to put off any one part of our city. We would love to have vibrant involvement and perspective from every corner of our city. And precinct O, one of our seventeen precincts, had, I would say, more than, if you divide, if you divide one by seventeen, they had plenty of representation for a heavy majority of the time that we've been a city. And, but there's nothing preventing anyone in precinct O, including you, Mr. Ziegler, from deciding that I want to be on a ballot, and I want my neighbors to vote me in or not vote me in. And many of the people up here have made that decision just in the last couple of years, with relatively little, probably, some, zero, myself especially, previous experience or record having been on a ballot at all. So I don't know that it's a question of our structure preventing people from being involved. I would love more people to be involved. I don't want to speak for everybody here, but I think we'd all love to have more voices. And that's why we've taken the steps we have to try to get more folks involved. And previous to my time on council, the previous council put to a vote to the citizens to reduce the number of signatures you need to get on a ballot, to make it more accessible. I just don't know that, I just don't think that the seven of us have made it harder to be able to sit up here. That's me.
And I would like to tack on to that. The past two elections have been uncontested. So anyone from precinct O that would like to run for office is gonna have a pretty good shot. There's not deep competition.
I, I moved into the City of Riverside eight, less than eighteen months before I put my name, I got fifty signatures to go put my name on the ballot. I seen that, it was something that I, there was an opportunity, as a new resident of the city, to get involved and make an impact. And to, council member Frye, it's almost been eight years since the city's had a contested race for council.
Yeah, everybody up here ran contested for the seat they currently occupy.
The part of, like, dividing the city up into precincts or wards at all, we, as a, as a city of twenty-five thousand people, couldn't get more than two on one, on one ballot, or three, or four on another to run. We had just enough to run out of the twenty-five thousand people here.
We got so many rentals here, maybe a lot of those people aren't.
They are.
There's almost ten thousand registered voters.
If you rent a house in Riverside, you are more than able to run for council. You're just as much of a resident as anyone else if you own a home, so.
Nine thousand, seven hundred registered voters, I believe.
And we can't get four, more than four people at a given time to run for council.
We can't get more than seven, basically.
Right.
Ten thousand out of the twenty-five, wow.
That's the current, current registered voter role that the, count of the Board of Elections put out.
And your proposal would prove a significant challenge for filling all of those seats.
I was hoping with, with the new pay schedule and stuff, it would be, more people would be interested, retirees.
I certainly, I certainly, I went on the record saying that as well, that that might not be the only thing that makes people want to run, but it could be something. And I know, and again, I don't want to drift too far, too far afield, but some of the charter amendments that have been proposed talk about folks who don't live in our city being able to serve on boards. And at other candidate or ballot forums that I've been to with Zach and with Brenda and with Sarah, I'd said, we would love to have Riverside residents to fully stock these boards. And we've had, we've had a rough time trying to find folks to fill in those roles. And if it, if it came to us not being able to hold quorum for statutorily required boards like BZA or planning, then could we look to the outside and find somebody with a subject matter expertise that could? matter expertise that could help those boards? But speaking for myself, again, I would love to just have Riverside folks, because there's, there's more than plenty. We're not a village of 4,500 people.
And, and to, last thing I'll say with this is that, Mr. Ziegler, if you email me at, or call me anytime of the day, I don't live near you.
I've spoken to you before.
I live nowhere near you, right? I live on the other side of town. But I care just as much about your neighborhood, and I'm sure I can confidently, just knowing the, the seven of us here, we all feel the same way that, like, yeah, I work from home. I am on my street, like, really, really often. I hardly ever leave my house except to come here, to be honest.
It'd be nice to know development, so.
So for me, my, my selfishness would say, I just care about what's in my backyard. But we get calls, all of us get calls from people all throughout the city of Riverside, and we forward them over to the city manager. We take action on the inquiries that we get from all over the city, so it's not.
Because they're just as valuable as the one for our next door neighbor.
So if we get, if we had a body of people who just cared about their little street, then are we really gonna all have a collective mindset that we want to care about the city as a whole, or just like care about the five streets that are gonna vote for us at our next election?
There would only be one vote, though.
Yeah.
There'd still be everybody else.
Let me, let me put some historical data here. There was a lot of discussion when the conditions of merger came up about what, what, how we should do that. And we looked at Huber Heights and Kettering and, and the precincts, and we looked at our community and the way, and the decision was made to do everybody at large. That way, every one of us represents 25,000 people, not 5,000 or 3,000 that, that can vote for us, okay? So the idea is that we get better representation overall, okay? And if you look at this, I live in the north.
I live in the north.
She lives in the north. North, south, north.
North, south, south.
South, south. So the whole community is represented, and like Pete said, Bill was on this council for 11 years. So there's fair representation, and we represent every resident of this community, not just that little precinct area. And if you look at Huber Heights, they have precincts, but they also have at-large, so they have a combination. But we're working very well together, and I, we believe that we're representing the whole, a community as a whole very well. And I believe that when we looked at that originally as parts of the condition of merger, and the charter commission looked at it, when they wrote the original charter, they looked at all of that, and that decision was made at that time that that would be the best representation for our community.
And I was involved in that, too. I'll get to everything that Mr. Denning has had to say.
So, I mean, it wasn't that we didn't think about it. It wasn't that we just automatically did something. It was thought about, and it was talked about a lot, some 30-some years ago.
30 years, yeah, a little over 30 years ago.
Ninety, in 1994, when we originally did this. So it isn't, okay? And, and it's not that we're not listening to you. We, we hear you, but looking at what, what's working, you know, the devil you know versus the devil you don't know, you know? And I think we're, what we've seen, especially with the voting situation, is that we have a hard enough time trying to get people to run for office or volunteer at large. If we go down to precincts, we would have even a more difficult time trying to find some. And what do, what do you do when a precinct doesn't have anybody in it that wants to run, period?
We were supposed to get that information, and we never did, how other cities do do that.
You know, and so, you know, if you have, let's say you had three precincts out of, out of seven that had nobody to run. Now what do you do? And so that, that was, that was the concern.
It happens all the time, though.
That is why, that is, so you understand, that is, was our concern when we originally came up with it, the, the way that we ran everybody at large, that was the reasons we did that.
And I don't think that those folks can say that the city isn't responsive, because just recently, we had a resident in here from that area asking for a speed limit sign. And within a week, we had a speed limit sign on Quinby. So, you know, the city responds to those requests and those votes just as much as they respond to everyone else in the city.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe the gentleman.
I've seen a lot of votes go unanimous, and there could have been like one vote for that neighborhood that didn't want the thing, like Glendale. There could have been one vote, but everything's always been unanimous.
Well, that's not true.
It's like we don't have a chance.
That's, yeah. And now, Mr. Ziegler, I certainly, we certainly appreciate you having a good back and forth with us, and we're happy to answer these questions. We're happy to give you your time to speak at these meetings, and I do genuinely appreciate your level of, of engagement. Thank you for the comments tonight. I'm reminded by the person to my right and to my left that we're well past our three minutes, but I am genuinely glad that we could have a dialogue on some of these items because I do think that it's worth discussing. And in a city where we were just gonna stonewall you, we would have just let you talk and set times up and go sit back down. That's not what we're going to, that's not what we wanted to do. So I appreciate you being so civil and respectful in the discourse that we had, and we welcome you back at future meetings.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, have a good evening. Onto the always popular and always brief, city manager's report.
I will be brief.
All right, that's great, Josh, moving, oh.
All right, three quick things. The first is, I will have an update for you all. We are having some lighting issues at the, I guess the Center of Flight property across from the Air Force Museum. Several of the decorative light fixtures that are out on Springfield Street in the median have corroded, and those poles are in danger of falling down. I'll have an update for you the next time we meet about what that, those conditions actually look like and some options to tackle that. But in case complaints come our way, we are aware of it, and we're working out a solution for that. Another quick reminder, we, according to our RC2s, which are the schedules that we follow for records retention, our, our policy, I suppose, according to the RC2, is to retain copies of our YouTube videos for a period of one year. And we have just been through a process internally where we've identified records that are due to be destroyed according to the RC2s and RC3s that we have through the Ohio Historical Connection. We will be shredding those documents later on this month. We also will probably be purging some of our YouTube recorded videos pursuant to those schedules. As always, we do retain copies of minutes as we are required to by law, which are the official copies of proceedings. But in case folks ask, where did this YouTube meeting go, we are on a schedule to retain those only for a certain amount of time before they're deleted. So just wanted to get that out there. And the final thing is to, for folks to keep an eye out on their mailboxes. The next newsletter is at the printer, and we expect that to go into people's mailboxes later next week, or perhaps early the week following, depending on the venerable post office and all the work that they do. And that is all I have.
All right. We'll move quickly through our city, our council member comments, and I'll start with Ms. Lomach.
Thank you.
All right, on to Mr. Brown.
Just a couple, three things. First off, thank you to our service department for the storm cleanup that we had, what we had this past weekend. Well done to keep everything clear and passable for everybody. Also, nice to see the projects on spinning finally start back up again and hopefully be nearing completion. And also, nice to see the land clearing for our Black Bar and Pickleball project just started, so looking forward to that. And one more thing, as a, this is kind of personal, as a school bus driver, I've had to personally, I don't want to say write up, but report, three people who went through my stop sign on, when I had my arm out, letting kids, either letting kids off or dropping them, or letting kids off or picking them up. So just be vigilant of school buses and the stop signs and the lights. When they're on, just give us some respect, give us some room, make sure we get these kids in and out as safe as we can, because at the end of the day, that's the most important thing that we do, so. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Joseph?
Yes. To go back to what the presentations we had earlier tonight, in a room full of firefighters, some of our police officers, their families, and it was really touching to see in person the, the impact that our, our employees, our, our fire department, our, our police department, and the dispatch services that we contract out are able to do. So when we, when we, we sit here as, as elected officials, and I know we're in the community, but a lot of what we see is paper, right, and numbers on a spreadsheet, and, and budgetary line items, and we see income taxes coming in, but it has a tangible effect. And that tangible effect is the lives that we're able to impact in our community, the lives we are literally able to save because we have the adequate funding, or, well, we have funding, not, may or may not be adequate, to, to have a fire department, to have a police department. And, and we staff it with phenomenal people. And, and as a council member, and most importantly, as a resident, I am extremely proud of the public safety services and our public works and the services that our city is able to offer our residents. And just know that, like, to be able to do that as a, as a point of fact, it does cost money. It is not free. We all take a burden to pay for that. But you see here tonight, in, in full living color, what that money that we budget for goes and impacts. So, so thank you all, if, if anybody watches the video and replay, to the fire department, to those here in the city, thank you for everything that you do, and, and I look forward to what we have in the future.
All right.
Real quick, Zach, I could echo on that real quick. The gentleman who came up who suffered the cardiac arrest, who had the squad called for him, he had three daughters over there as well, and I have three daughters. And I could only imagine, you know, those, those three daughters would be without their daddy if, if they hadn't done what they do for a living, so I agree. Thank you.
I would like to personally thank the Riverside Chamber. They hosted a forum for the ballot issues or ballot initiatives that we'll be facing in a little over a month now. And also thank the good folks at Community Methodist Church, Pastor Fritz Sinclair, for housing the event, and for the chamber for putting all the work together to pull that event off. There's, there's good attendance, there was good questions, there was good discussion, and I was really happy to, just to be in attendance, because, you know, we're all residents, too. We all have to go in and, and vote and pull the lever on November 5th. But it was, it was very, it was, it was very good to see our chamber take a role in that and really play a good part in getting that information out, and, and not just hoping people found out about the stuff. And we had the director of Five Rivers there, we had the executor, we had the deputy director of the libraries, we had the superintendent of schools, we had the city manager. So people could have questions specifically answered about some of their concerns or some of their questions, and it was coming directly from the people who were gonna make it, be making those decisions. So thank you to Brett from the chamber, thank you to the whole chamber for making sure that happened in our community. Really appreciate that. Onto Mr. Maxfield.
Just a couple things. One, congratulations to all the newest firefighters here in Riverside and the ones who received the promotions. And like I said, it was, it was great to see the members, officers, dispatchers, and firefighters be recognized for their lifesaving performances they did over the last couple of months. Also, speaking on kind of the other things we've talked about, Monday, October 7th, is the last day to register to vote. I don't care what side you root for, or what side you're, you're pulling for. If you have a voice, or you want a voice, quit speaking, make sure you're registered to vote so that you can actually truly have a say at the ballot box in November. So October 7th is the last day to make sure you are registered.
Ms. Frye?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, and on.
Did you have a blood drive? I did. We had a pretty good turnout. Thank you, everyone who donated. Our next blood drive will be in December, and I will, when we get closer to that, I will share that information.
All right, and on to Mr. Denning.
Two things, three, three things. Josh, the Troy Pike and Brant are looking phenomenal. I drive both those daily, and yes, it was, has been a pain in the butt the most of the summer, but they are looking great right now, and, and I want to thank the services department, and, and specifically, I know that Cathy had a lot to do with making sure that we had the money saved up to make sure that we did that urban paving, and it worked out really nice. And, and, yeah, we know it took a long time, but it, it was well worth it. The last thing I want to do is say, and, and I can say this one, please vote for the school levy, because the schools are a foundation of our community, and if we don't have great schools like we have now, they just need the extra funding for their capital improvements, permanent capital improvements levy. The, the bond issue that paid for the brand-new schools is 20 years old, and it will be dropping off the ballot, it'll be dropping off your taxes in January, and this new levy would then take effect, so it's pretty much a wash. But please vote for the school levy. And can we endorse that?
If we've yet to, we certainly can.
I would like to make a motion that, that City of Riverside Council endorse the school levy for Mad River.
Second.
Issue 32, I believe.
Yeah, issue 32.
Yes. All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Denning, and a second from Ms. Frye. Any further discussion? The only thing I'll say is that one of the best parts about having Brett at the, the election forum last week was that we got a real estate perspective on why it's important to have good schools. So, and I, I'm hoping there's a lot of people in the room that heard that, that you're, this is an investment, folks. You need to help your investment. All those in favor?
And I can say they have not asked for new money in at least 12 years.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And this is, this is, this is an investment in our future, because we built brand-new schools 20 years ago, but we dropped the capital improvements levy to get that passed.
To pay for the bond.
Now, we need to take care of the schools and, and buy the thing, fix, keep the things up, like air conditioning and, and heating and roofs and all the major components that keep our schools together.
And Sarah, did you want to add?
No, not about schools.
Okay, so we'll call the question on that, this endorsement. All those in favor of supporting issue 32, matter of schools, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, and Sarah, you had one last thing?
And I had, I'm, you probably all have received a notification, but Valley Crest's issue over in Roar Park, and they are having a thank you for the community on Sunday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 with activities and stuff in the park, if any of you are interested. And I think it's a nice thing for them to do for the folks who have been so impacted by the issues in that neighborhood.
We'll make sure to get that information out.
3:00 to 5:00 at Roar Park.
And for the median minutes, about an hour and 15 minutes ago, it's 11 o'clock is the Wagner Subaru event, and it's about to on the face of the page.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a big arrow to that part of the minutes.
Please see minute number.
I've been to that event. I went the, the very first year. It's grown bigger and bigger every year since.
At the park?
Yes, and, and it is a fantastic event for the whole family.